Feeling right.
Well, okay, so we're not. So I did a stupid thing. It'll be two weeks ago Saturday. I hit my head full front on and I whacked myself really good. And so you have to just go through. Yes, I have contacted my doctor and like, yeah, that's normal. The headaches, being tired, whatever, feeling like shit. So, but this morning I did wake up without a headache. I'm heading right now, but.
There's progress.
There's progress. But, but I did miss you guys last week and I thought that it wasn't a very busy meeting, so.
Yeah. All righty, we got anybody else doing cyberspace?
Nope.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, Chair called me into our acceptance motion improvements of July.
I'll make the motion people the minutes after I had to take to office to move them.
Sorry.
Any moments change in minutes?
No.
All those favorite options, you can say, and I, those opposed, what you know this. We've got a meeting with the USI at nine thirty. Item three is upcoming events. Probably what we should do right now to save time since we got twenty minutes here. Why don't we go and, why don't we go in non-public with purposes of discussing personal contract?
We want to hang out just a few minutes, so we'll be coming back.
Yeah, we'll come back out.
Yeah, we'll be coming back out for the USI meeting.
Right.
Well, I just wanted to make sure you knew that we're back out.
Yeah, so I'll take a motion going on public.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess it was, you know, what I wanted to do.
That's all, yes.
We'll be back out at nine thirty. They're coming back out.
I think you can.
Who's replaced?
Yeah.
Bill.
Yeah.
The new Lou.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see. Em, all right. Good buddy, how about you? Doing well?
How are you?
Hi.
Somebody read my mind.
We're talking.
Oh, yeah.
Last thing, man.
Things are okay.
You're looking good.
It's a crazy world out there.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Well, thank you. How are you?
Good, good.
All right, we're ready. I'm sorry, we're a few minutes late.
Yeah. Um, that is quite all right.
Wow.
This is one of the things that you're all familiar with. It has a very, very familiar feel to it. From, yeah, from last year and probably lots of prior years as well.
Thanks. Yeah, one for Mr. President.
I believe so.
But I didn't.
I am giving a point. Yeah, I didn't bring it. Lee and I talked that I didn't bring an extra. I had to add and bring a couple extra because I didn't know if anyone else was getting attempts.
Um, is, are we, is this settled?
Yes. Yep. Um, Janet, are we on?
Yes.
Okay.
We're on it. Is anybody else there? You know?
Looks like just us. I'm part of this question. Just us.
Okay. You're up.
Excellent. Well, good morning and thank you as always for taking the time. Um, this is a plan review, mid-year plan review, renewal forecast. Um, and again, I think it'll have a very familiar feel for you all. Um, I'm gonna update you on the current year. And then we're gonna talk about how we anticipate Anthem is going to go about underwriting the group for renewal for one hundred and twenty-five. Um, and again, it's kind of a similar thing where I think you probably expect a double-digit increase originally, and we will negotiate that down to the very best deal that we can get. And, you know, if we want to talk about alternative forms of funding the program, we're happy to do the work to, 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 to do that as well. I've already got Anthem working on, um, funding alternatives. They have a, a, a everybody calls it something different. I'm, I'm, I'm forgetting the name of what they call it. It's like a balanced funding account. So it's, it, it, it runs like it's fully insured, but it's actually self-insured. And then there's full-on self-insurance that we've talked about in the past. So, so, um, as far as this goes, um, I, I pa- slide five, page five is really just words. I prefer to go through the pictures. I'm a visual person, so I'm looking at slide seven, which is current year-to-date. And with Anthem.
We have all different numbers in my things. Oh, no, we don't. I see. I got it. I'm sorry. And yet with the dash in front of it, it looks like fifteen seventeen.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Not different.
I got it.
Actually, you know what? That is kind of confusing. Um, so Anthem, the way their contract runs it, that they, we, our most recent month of claims that we have is March. It's August. That's, I, I don't necessarily think that's a great approach, but that's the information that we have for under our underwriting team to do the work. And again, this is our work. This is, this isn't Anthem's work, although the formula that we use is mirroring Anthem's formula to calculate the renewal. So current year-to-date to three months, the loss ratio is a hundred and four percent. That's premium uh, paid to claims paid under the plan. So it's running a little hot. The break even that they would be looking for, for a normal, fully insured group would be something along the lines of eighty, eighty-five percent.
But we're, I'm sorry, I, I know you're gonna say it, so I'll just let you say it before I ask the question. Go ahead.
Um, the next page identifies high-cost claimants. USI's approach to this is to simply identify any claimant that has exceeded fifty percent of the pooling level, which under your fully insured program with Anthem is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. What that means is when they go to do the renewal calculation, they will charge against your plan up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of any claim. And anything above that gets pooled out. It's, it goes to reinsurance and it doesn't, no longer counts against your plan.
Which is, which is the cost for that is built into our premium.
Correct.
You know, so it's already built in. So the fact of them charging above one seventy-five plus the, I call it co-insurance, you, I'm sure have a different name for it. Uh, it would be like double charging you. So you really need to duck out the stuff that's over one seventy-five. And, and that's what, the question I was gonna ask, but it was on the next page, so you beat me too.
Yeah. And, and so this is a market improvement. I mean, it's only three months, but you have a history of having a fair number of high-cost claimants. Um, not always a lot that pierced the stop-loss, the pooling level, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. But again, that's all, that's all in, in here and we're gonna, we're gonna cover that. Um, I obviously didn't bring enough money, did I?
I'll get it.
No, you can't buy it because I have this.
So was that one seventy-five for the year?
Yes.
Okay.
So any, any claim.
So we wouldn't really have any of the first three months anyway. We do.
Well, it depends on when.
Due to lag, it's unlikely because these are claims that would be, well, you know, they could have been incurred in the prior year and paid in, in, in twenty-twenty-four. So, um, I, I'll just, I'm gonna cross my fingers and hope that things are trending in a better direction.
Okay.
Um, um, so we have just a single claim at a hundred and seventeen thousand so far. Um, and I did want to make one other point. Um, total claims of two-point-two million pharmacy claims make up, that's five hundred thousand of that, so less than twenty-five percent. Twenty to twenty-two percent is how pharmacy claims are typically running nowadays. So if you're in that ballpark, that's to be expected, which is an uptick from where it has been historically, because historically it's like fifteen to seventeen percent. But with all these expensive prescription drugs that are in the market now.
You know, the workforce we have is getting a little older too, so that's gonna have a certain impact on it.
Can you tell which drugs that you put deep in? I don't know until I got it.
I don't know. Um, although I can push Anthem forward.
Be interesting to see how much of the.
Yeah, all right. Um, so if the pharmacy costs are in line with what you should expect to say.
Can we go back to page nine?
Yes.
Um, on page nine, is this the loss ratio minus the high claims?
No, so page nine is two thousand twenty-three, so this is the prior year.
Okay, I see it. All right.
Two thousand twenty-three, so, um, premiums were eight-point-seven, claims were eight-point-four, that's a ninety-six percent loss ratio. And the following page shows you, and again, it's a, it's a significant number of high-cost claimants, all of which, except for the last one. Well, again, this is December twenty-twenty-three, so it's hard to say. I think all these people are actually active now. Um, but one, two of the top, the top two claims were, were pooled. So when we get to the calculation formula, you're gonna see, we're gonna use the rolling twelve months of claims and you'll see how much, how much got pulled out of these high-cost claims. Okay. Um, so in the twenty-twenty-three plan year, there were two that pierced the stop-loss. And, you know, really, you got a seventy-eight thousand dollar pharmacy claimant. Um, other than that, everything seems to be, you know, within, you know, it's not a range that you'd be super alarmed about. Um, and then really where you get to the heart of the matter is starting on page eleven. The carrier is always gonna use the most recent twelve months of claims to start their calculation for pricing the plan for next year. So this is the rolling twelve, starting on page eleven. This is the rolling twelve through, April of twenty-three through March twenty-four, showing a hundred and five-point-eight percent loss ratio. And again, the next page will, will identify what the high-cost climates are and what got pulled out. But before I go there, I want to point out to you that in our favor, we're gonna update this as more months of claims come in. So the good news there is that we're gonna replace April of twenty-three, May of twenty-three, probably June of twenty-three. And if you look, those are high-cost months. Hundred-three, hundred-four, hundred-and-seventy-four essentially percent loss ratio. Throwing those months out, ideally replacing them in the formula with months that are run better is, is gonna help out.
Yeah, because August, September, October, November. Isn't that?
Definitely.
It's interesting why, well, nearly the beginning of the summer last year, we had so many claims. Is that just an anomaly or? See, in twenty-three, you had May, June, July.
Yeah, no, I.
I, I, from what I heard, um, it's COVID-related because people put off screenings and things like that. And things have worsened what they would have been if they went.
Yeah, okay. That's, that definitely, that went into twenty-two, twenty-three for sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
And you're right, when people finally did go.
When they finally went.
You know, they weren't at stage one, they were at something higher than that.
Yeah.
Um, so running twelve, rolling twelve months, a hundred and five-point-eight percent stop-loss, uh, I'm sorry, loss ratio.
Where's that? Because I, I'm looking at a different number.
Are you on page eleven?
I'm on page eleven and mine says net law, net loss ratio is eighty-five-point-one.
Yeah. Okay, be, because what that means is you take that number and then you back out claims that are over the pooling level.
That, well, that's what I was asking.
So, so, so I'm, I'm actually gonna get to that, but yes, you're right. And that loss ratio is eighty-five percent. But, you know, again, under a fully insured pooled arrangement, you're, you know, you're paying for the stop-loss.
I understand a bit.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, so as you'll see.
That's one of the protections that, you know, we, or.
That is.
Right.
Yeah.
That we're paying for.
So in this rolling twelve months, you've got three claims that pierced that a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar pooling level. And that's going to be amount above pooling is one-point-eight oh-three. So when we get to the actual calculation formula, you'll see that that gets pulled out. That gets taken out because that doesn't get charged against you.
And I think, I think at least one of those, maybe two of those are no longer active.
Okay. I would, I'll, I'll take your word for it. I don't know that.
I know that.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Good. Excellent. Um.
Well, unless which ones are active and which ones are done. At least a couple.
But again.
I don't.
So again, though, this ends March of twenty-four, so it's, you know, you've got several months in the meantime.
Since then, right?
Yeah, I think so, but since then, and, and, and si- even though them not being active any longer is, is, it might have occurred before then, there'd still be some residual payment that continued after then. I'm just trying to dance around the fact that the poor person passed away. You know, I'm, I'm, and it was, it was, it was awful to all of us.
Yeah.
You know, a long, longer than me. Uh, forty-two years while she was here.
My time.
Yeah.
Um.
And I, and I, I'm positive that that was by far our highest claim.
Yeah.
Like ever.
Yeah, like ever.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was in the hospital for months and rehab and then back down to hospital and, and that's. So I'm confident that that was our highest claim.
So again, rolling twelve months is what you typically would use to price the plan for next year. We do have the prior rolling twelve months. So you've got rolling twenty-four months. And the reason we do it this way is because what, and, and in the fully insured environment, we, we don't know, they're gonna blend your experience with manual, like book rates. They have control of the blending formula, the weighting. Typically, you, you know, more would be weighted to your plan, your actual experience, because you're three hundred and some odd, three hundred and sixty-five people on the plan. You've got credibility, but you don't have a hundred percent credibility. You're one group of three hundred and however many people. So, um, so the current rolling twelve, the prior rolling twelve, which is seventy-three-point-nine percent, which is terrific. So you want that blended in. Um, and the high-cost climates that, you know, and here again, hardly, you know, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars was pulled out in that period. Getting to the point of page sixteen, which is the formula, so we really kind of have to use, instead of using our formula, we might normally like to use, we have to rely on Anthem's formula because we don't know things like, what is the manual rate? We don't, but there's no way for us to know that unless Anthem tells us that, and typically that's not gonna happen. So what's the manual rate? We don't know. So we're just, we're using their formula to tell you how we think they are going to underwrite this. And I'm happy to go through any portion of this. Um, but at the end of the day, by our calculation, we're looking at something double digits, like seventeen percent out of the gate renewal. Again, it'll get updated. Hopefully, we're carving out horror-performing months and replacing them with better performance. And then there's just the negotiation. There's going to the market to seek competitive bids. If that seems like the appropriate thing to do, Anthem is definitely gonna put a, a different manner of funding the plan separate from self, separate from fully insured that looks a lot like fully insured. You're gonna pay premiums, as always, for a mature, but it's actually self-funded contract, and you're gonna be able to participate in any kind of a surplus at the end. And then that's kind of a middle ground to just a full-on self-funded program, which we've talked about in the past. And, you know, again, we'll do the work. Um, we'll go to the market if you want us to do that. I presume that since we did last year, we, you know.
Yeah, we needed to do that.
Yeah.
The, uh, you know, nationally, there was a report that was just published that that in the last twelve months, we had a profit of fifteen percent increase in, in health insurance premiums across the country. Um, so when you're saying seventeen, I mean, that doesn't, it doesn't surprise me based on the passion line.
But, you know, in all fairness, the job that US, USI has done for us over the last three years, we've had almost no increase.
Right.
I mean, it, last year was three-point, just, just, just a hair over three percent.
And where did we start?
Eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, we started at eighteen.
It's crazy.
And then if you look at years before, we were right at zero.
Yeah.
The two years before, so, um, uh, I know it won't be seventeen.
No.
My, my point being that if, if any other entity, you know, of our similar size, if, or even us, if, if you told, if you guaranteed us in writing that over four years, right, because that's what we're talking about, it's saying this at seventeen, last year at three, and the two before at zero. If you, if anybody guaranteed that over four years, you had a twenty percent increase, you'd say, high five.
Yeah, right.
You know, great. And the fact that, you know, over the prior three years, we've only had a three percent increase. And this one, yes, it says seventeen, but you know it won't be. Um, you know, I think we've done, um, a, a heck of a job, which, you know, translates to you guys and to, to a level of cooperation with our employees better than in the past.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, at, at calling for foolish things. A, 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 a few years ago, I, I, I fell and hurt my knee and I needed an MRI. And I followed the rules, you know, made the call.
Yeah.
And one MRI was twenty-four hundred and another MRI was eight hundred dollars. You know, so if, you know, that saves sixteen hundred dollars off the, off of what it pays out. And those were all approved places. I mean, it approved in the sense that the insurance company would, would have paid that. You know, um, but I think our employees are getting more accustomed to doing that. They're getting more accustomed to ninety-day scripts, uh, you know, which is a big savings instead of thirty-day scripts. And I think that's been helpful. And some of us old people, uh, are going on Medicare.
Plus you've got the proliferation of these urgent care centers.
Yeah.
I mean, I think people are getting to the point where they're comfortable.
Well, and, 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 you know, they, I, I think that they're selling themselves with the idea that, that you don't have the prolonged wait at an urgent care center that you have at, at, at the emergency room. Because the wait.
Copay.
And the copay is, you know, Anthem was smart to build in more equitable copay for, um, the, then, uh, at, at these places that you can visit as opposed to the emergency room. Uh, the copay's a third of what it would be. Oh, it's even much. I thought it was fifty.
And it's one of the fifty, but they were two.
Yes, a hundred and fifty, and I thought it was fifty, but I guess it's twenty-five, something.
Yeah.
I've been lucky enough to stay out of all of those places lately, so.
But I mean, you know, the emergency room is the most expensive place you're gonna get care.
Well, it, it, it's not so much the, you know, it's that when you go there, they give you every test imaginable. I mean, I don't see, I was, one year I, I did some checking about somebody that went into emergency. You can't walk out without six or seven grand.
Right.
E- even if you're okay.
Right.
You know, relatively okay.
Yeah, but I think people are, over time, have gotten more comfortable going, going to these urgent care centers. I mean, they are competing for your business. Yeah, they want you walking through the doors. They're incented to provide good quality care so that you'll come back again next time. You'll tell your family and your friends.
It's the same people, less diagnostics, but it's the same people that will treat you in the ER. I mean, there's, they're, they float those people and, and it's the same people that treat you there. And, and yes, you don't have, you know, instant, the total instant diagnostics, but you have a lot of them.
Yeah. Yeah, right. They can't do everything. And I mean, if you show up at one of these places and you should be in the emergency room, they're gonna tell you that and help, you know, help you make arrangements to get there if that's what needs to happen.
Yeah.
But again, I, I'm just thinking the point that people have over time grown accustomed to using these places and realizing that the experience generally is better because you're, you know, if you go to the emergency room, it's not really an emergency, your wait is going to be extended by everybody who walks in the door behind you who's more of an emergency than you are. Yeah. So it's, it's just, again, I, that, that is definitely, people seem to be using the plan in the appropriate way by capitalizing on things like that and making the phone call to find out, you know, I need an MRI, I wanna pay three thousand bucks for that or eight hundred.
Yeah. We've, we've been trying to educate people about that in our, um, in every opportunity we get, whether it be in negotiations or whether it be when we meet with the non-union. We stress that, you know, at, at every time. And, and people don't, I think at the beginning, people didn't seem to understand that, that what they're doing impacts the, the, the big picture. You know, they just didn't make a connection. And, and it's everybody, you know, that, that has an impact on the big picture.
Yeah. So there's two sides to the coin, right? There's what do I pay when I get my care that I need? And then what comes out of my paycheck next year?
Yeah.
Because I was a good steward of the plan and I chose the lower-cost MRI and I chose the urgent care versus the emergency room. It, it really does affect them in two ways. You're right, you're absolutely right.
That's what we've been trying to stress.
So to the extent that you need any help communicating things like that, I mean, we have a whole communications thing.
Yeah.
Like.
Theta, yeah, we enjoy working, you know, with your people and, and we actually enjoy working with Anthem too when they come and, 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 you know, that's worked out pretty well for us. But, um, um, but I have a sense, uh, Mr. Chairman, that the consensus is to, um, if you self-insured and, and, um, you know, we talked seriously about it last year, but the increase was so minimal that we, we, we didn't really wanna take the, any chances, risk, you know.
Well, it's kind of not COVID and we didn't know what was going on with Abby.
Yeah, we just didn't know what provider, provider networks.
I, I, again, our job is to put the information on the table so that you can make the right decision.
Well, go to it.
For the county.
Right. Yeah, right.
So.
Have at it, man.
Awesome. Is there anything else that I can answer as a result of what I've put in front of you here today?
Fortunately, you have a set of experienced commissioners, you know, that, that, you know, we've been, you know, you, we've been through this for a few years now. And Diane and I have both been through full self-insured plans. Um, you know, we've done that, uh, in our, in our history.
Yeah.
Getting that call every Monday going. Oh, Jesus, Raymond, where are we gonna get that?
Well, I think, I think last year we had discussions as to like, uh, the timing, whether we'd be doing weekly or bi-weekly or monthly or something like that. I don't know if we wanna do weekly too.
Yeah, that was a lot of stress.
That was a lot of stress.
But what, you know, these are all things we talk about, you know, when, when the time comes.
And the stressful part, sometimes it, moving to self-funded is not, it's when we come out of self-funding.
That's, that's, we.
We, we've tried every scenario to optimize, you know, um.
It was just one, one of those times, you know, that we lucked out coming out of self-funding that, you know, we had this like a golden opportunity, so we did it. And again, since then, our, our numbers have been really good, so we haven't, um, you know, we haven't been tempted to do anything different, but maybe now's the time.
On the self-funding piece, the, uh, the stop-loss review, you know, that's vital because of, um, how many people we may have in the system.
The self-insurance, yeah, both, on both ends.
Yeah.
You know, percentage of pool and, 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 uh, individual stop-loss. All right, well, those are, those are all negotiable things anyway.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, you know, Anthem's gonna cut the stop-loss and we'll go to the market with our preferred stop-loss carrier vendors and
see what happens.
See what happens.
Yeah.
All good.
All good. Get to it, man. Appreciate it. If you got nothing else today.
How many, you said, really, three sixty-five total? In this time?
Um, I just handed over my presentation.
Oh, right there. Are you talking about the number of?
Five lives.
Three, three seventy-eight as of.
Employees.
Employees.
Yeah.
Eight hundred twenty-six.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they're told to a thousand at one time.
Eight, eight hundred and sixty-five lives.
Yeah. Belly buttons.
Belly buttons.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't show up.
Yes.
You know? You think about it. Okay, all right.
Thank you all.
Thanks for making the trip up, man.
Uh, no, it was my pleasure. Um, and I brought donuts. Not exactly, you know, the key to your wellness program, but nevertheless. Nevertheless. Uh, thank you all.
Okay, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, man.
Take care.
Well, he knows his stuff. He does. You know, and, and, you know, USI has this huge nationwide component. You know, of underwriters and, and things to, and their numbers have always been spot on, so.
But it's, it's getting the claims from Anthem, you know, the most up to date is.
Part of the problem.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's Anthem, because they risk losing the business, isn't always a hundred percent cooperative at providing us the information.
Cause we have, what, March? We're in August. It's crazy.
Okay, we get, we got any old and new business, we got the upcoming meetings. One, one point I wanna, I'm, make, Ray, you had a subcommittee meeting with no quorum. Uh, that, that's, uh, they simply just heard presentations correct.
Yes.
And the three, those that showed up.
Last Friday.
Okay. All right. So there's no minutes or anything?
No, no, no committee report.
That's why I'm trying to reschedule, cause I remember that was an issue before and we had to delay a whole thing because. Yeah, right. Well, this time it's different because there is no report. There is no minutes, cause there's no.
Right.
I mean, I think, I, I, I think that, that, uh, I'm gonna speak to the county attorney about that, but it's it, it, because there, there was no quorum, there's no report and there's no minutes, so there's no, that, that's, that's no meeting. Yeah, I just.
Yeah.
Hope that somebody doesn't say. Well, they can say it, but, I mean, they really don't have any statutory authority anymore.
I have a question about that though, cause this Friday, tomorrow, you have, um, you have a couple of subcommittees, but you have the capital expense subcommittee who's gonna go over the whole thing, right?
Not gonna go over the whole thing.
No.
The, the purpose of that committee is to determine whether whatever, whatever is ultimately accepted by the delegation. Okay, is funded in the proper manner. So there's two choices. It, it, one choice is to fund it out of the tax rate, which is ridiculous if you, if you think about it.
Yeah.
And the, the second, uh, option is to bond it, which is certainly what our proposal is. Um, that's, now they can ask any question they want and we, we will have everybody there. But the purpose of that committee is not to review what every other committee's already done. That's done by the executive committee and then, then by the full delegation. So it's not, the purpose of it, again, is not to review what every other subcommittee's already done. Certainly, if people on that committee have questions, uh, they can ask them then, if the chair allows it. Or they can ask it at the executive committee or ask it at the full delegation. Ultimately, whatever anybody asks or anything, whatever is recorded, these are just points that will be further discussed at the subsequent meetings.
Yeah, cause for instance, on a capital piece, they could, they could, you know, we can't afford to do that, but they could self-fund some of it. You know, you have fifteen million dollar, right, fifteen point six, you know, there's. Request, they could say, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, raise taxes on the third or twenty five percent of it and not bond it. They could split the baby, they could.
Yeah, that, that's what, that's, that's the purpose of that committee.
That's what the purpose of the capital. Make that determination, which.
But each individual committee, um, is, makes the determination about the need uh, for the item, because that's their subject, you know, like Riverside Restaurant.
Yeah.
Like, um, you know, criminal justice.
And the, and the, and the biggest difference between this and the last time with Cliff's objection was just because they created minutes. And they created a report, which was never, ever, uh, adopted by any committee or, or.
And we sent that out.
And we had sent that out. So, so.
And this time, there's nothing.
There's nothing. There's nothing. There's gonna be no report because we only had three.
Right, there's no quorum.
Even though we only had one person that said they weren't gonna make it and then.
Yeah, nobody showed up.
And then nobody showed up.
Okay.
So, I mean, the chairman of the committee?
Yeah, the chairman of the committee didn't show up. All right. So we got some, now, we get a little new business. Okay, we got questions or comments from the public. Okay, Susan. Would you head injury and all, go ahead.
Thanks. Um. I'm just a little confused over this last discussion, cause I had attended the first subcommittee meeting. And at the end of that, that group made a motion and I've not read those minutes, um, and I'm just going off memory, what, to forward it on or to recommend that. So how does that contrast to what happened last Friday of not having a quorum? Do, do each one of these subcommittees have to make a motion to recommend on to the next level?
They're not required.
They're not required to do that.
No, so what, what will actually most likely have to happen is we'll have to repeat all of those capital, uh, all of those capital presentations to the executive committee.
Okay.
Right. Which is a shame, cause it was, and, and then it went on for two and a half hours.
Yeah, I figured that that was gonna be a long one.
Yeah, yeah. The only, the only two, the only two groups that have statutory responsibility is the executive committee and, and, and a whole other.
Okay, um, going back a couple of months, um, I just, an update on the auto auction, did we get rid of all of those?
No, we haven't got rid of it yet, but it's, it's in the process. Um.
Because it only takes us long?
Yeah, we.
Some of those are being used.
No, no, all those, uh, now we, I've got them all retired. They're all retired, as many as we are going to auction off. I have this, uh, I have the major here shaking his head, but as many as we're going to auction off have been retired. It's, the ad's been in the paper, but we usually leave like a month. Honestly, a lot of times taxi companies from Boston will remember, wanna look at them. And we're, so we're trying to get our best prices. What we don't wanna do is have it so that we have such a short period of time that only local people, maybe that work at the county or something, see the vehicle, and those are our only bidders. That's not what we're looking for, because that's not gonna give us the biggest return.
Right. And I'm assuming that if we get rid of it as a whole, it's much easier.
Oh, much easier. And we have all the titles, the keys, the, you know.
Yeah.
And, um.
I just, I just, that bullet's out there in the back corner, just keeping it. Okay, and now I need a little bit of explanation, um. In the capital improvements program under Riverside, there was a replacement, um, with regard to a dryer. And I also know that we have the laundry facilities over at the jail and I was under the assumption that all the laundry from Riverside went to the jail to be done. But somebody educate me on this process. And is it duplication of services or?
It's, it's linen. Linen is done at, linen is done at the jail. Personal clothes are done at Riverside. And, and, uh, uh, the biggest reason is, is temperature differences. Um, you know, we washed the linen at, at a
At a high.
At, at, at a higher, uh, temperature, because that's what infection control demands. And, and, uh, so we have a.
That makes, it makes sense now. I'm just, you know, clarifying because I.
We, 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 a couple of times sent a sweater over and, and when it comes back, it like fits a doll. It fits like a Barbie doll.
I'm in the world business.
Yeah, it fits a Barbie doll, so, uh, we, we, we try and avoid that mistake of having to replace someone's clothing. Cause we put it in the wrong dryer.
Yeah, your lodges, triple X from Bob's. Break them down so I can wear them.
Yeah.
I thought I had, there was discussion that you needed reversible dryer tumblers over at Riverside. But that's strictly used for personal clothes, but comforters and that type of stuff and any women's bed stuff, towels, whatever, all go over to the jail and it's all done over there.
That's correct.
Okay, makes sense now. Head injury and all. No, that's, it's not something to laugh about.
No, we're not. We, you know, we're just, it's, it's.
I, I understand, but it's, I don't wish anybody to have to.
No.
No.
It hasn't been a confirmed diagnosis, so that's what it is.
And we wish you luck, honestly.
Oh, thank you. And Ms. Rollo, I hope that you're feeling better. I haven't had a chance to welcome you back to.
Fine, I can walk again.
We're all back, hopefully, you know.
All right. Let's take a motion. I'll go back and, as I get a set. No move. Second, you show Watson?
Yes.
Myself, yes, okay.
Under what?
We're going back, going back to executive session. The ninety one, uh, dash A, colon, three, section two.
Personnel.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.